Good morning, I'd like to call the August thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-four Municipal District of Tabor Regular Meeting of Council to order. We have an agenda in front of us. Is there any additions or deletions?
I can accept the agenda as presented.
Thank you. Those in favor, that's carried. All right, next is Protocol Items Announcements or Recognitions. Does anyone have anything they'd like to bring forward? So I just have one. On behalf of the M D of Tabor, we'd like to send our condolences and our thoughts to Reeve Kissel and the Rocky View County council and residents for the loss of their employee Colin Howe, as well as the Fortis employee who was involved in the incident. We are grateful for the work that our staff does and their willingness to help others and in his time of duty faced a very, the worst tragedy that could ever be expected. So on behalf of M D Council, we send our condolences and appreciation to those who continue to serve. All right, we will move, continue on with the agenda. Confirmation of minutes for the July sixteenth Regular Meeting of Council.
Can give a motion to adopt ten minutes as they've been presented.
Any questions or concerns? Those in favor, that's carried. So we do have delegations today. First of all, we'll go to the public engagement process. Is there anyone in the audience other than the set delegations who would like to speak to council? Seeing none, then we will continue on with our delegation. Initially, we have R C and P as set for nine oh five, but we'll just move them down the agenda if when they arrive. They obviously have some other commitments. So at this time, we would like to call Tabor and District Adult Learning forward to give their presentation and business case. So just so that you're aware, when you're speaking, you have to press the button. And as you're getting set up, then we'll just introduce the council table and then I'll turn it over to Mike to introduce his team. So go ahead.
Good morning.
Okay, they're there. Some of the slides.
We'll, we'll start here. Well, we'll introduce ourselves first. Yeah, John Turkado, I'm a councillor, Division Two, which is south of Tabor.
Tamara Miyanega, councillor for Division Four, which is north of Tabor.
Chantel Clausen, councillor for Division Seven, Boxhall area.
Murray Reynolds, Division Six, in Genania.
Merrill Harris, excuse me, Merrill Harris, Division One, which is Tabor West.
Good morning, Reeve Tamara and council members. I'm not going to read all the slides. I know time is short, somehow very detailed.
I'm just going to interrupt you, Shazad. I just want to make sure the person who's supposed to be online, are they? Okay.
So we sent him, we sent our person the link, but it's too early in the morning. But we have his consent and his story with us, just in case.
Excellent, that sounds good. So my, my apologies for interrupting.
No, that is perfectly okay. So today, I'm here to bring another case forward and I will give my, provide my rationale after. We had applied for hundred and fifty grand to Town of Tabor, which we have received as a loan. C F A P, which is two hundred and fifty, which they've said the monies we will receive is in March and we cannot change the category. So they are both for renovations. So today I would like to bring forward the hundred and fifty we are asking as a grant and more towards the purchase and not towards the renovations. And if we could up the ask to two fifty, I know it's new, but if it goes towards the purchase, and I will explain it. Currently, we are serving fifty-two percent of the low German-speaking population. And we don't have programs which funds us. Our staff, one of them is present here, goes over and above out of her way to do the work and do her own work at the same time. We don't receive any funding. They do not write English or French or comprehend legal terminologies, driver's license, passport, C R A, et cetera. The Tabor registries may have opened now, but the government of Alberta offices in the same building are still closed. And they are referring the same clients for renewals to us only because they don't have an L G M speaking person at the registries. When our clients go to Letbridge and they are supposed to serve them in Letbridge, they are turned away. They are sent to, back to us. So we are doing the work for government of Alberta, Letbridge, the whole county without any funding whatsoever. Simply because our motto is no one should be left behind in the community. That was the relevant background to today is we used to pay forty something thousand, forty-five or forty-nine for rent. A year and a half ago, our rent was increased without any prior notice. And we're paying sixty-nine thousand today for the year. This amount includes the parking, yes. In two thousand and twenty-three, we had budgeted one point one nine eight million for wages, sixty-nine for rent. But the total funding we received was just slightly above one million and sixty-five thousand for the rent. Everything else went through our own reserves. And this will continue, so I believe. And this year, our annual budget says budgeted at one point two million. Our unrestricted reserves are only five hundred and forty-seven thousand. So if we were to purchase the building on our own, we're completely depleted. As of August nine, we cannot even go back because the financial conditions have been removed. So we have to move forward regardless. And at the same time, we have to keep a minimum of twenty-five percent in reserves to ensure budgets are met. So the youth program is directly across from the building we are purchasing. The new location, which is five three two four and five three two two, they're two in one. We'll have an additional nineteen hundred square feet to serve and an option to build on the top floor in the future, five years, ten years down the road. This is a hypothetical situation. If we were to take a mortgage, our mortgage would have cost us about fifty-four thousand annually. Rent we are paying is sixty-nine and will go up. And they're also speaking of planning to sell the building. So we won't have a place to go if they do sell the building. We will be evicted. We are centrally located and with the new location, we can serve thirty to forty clients a day. Even fifty, if we have extra staff and fifty percent of them are unique clients. They are not just Tabor, they are from the M D of Tabor, all your constituents we're serving without any funding. With the enhanced capacity and infrastructure, we will be able to apply for additional programs. We have a partnership with Colair College. We are starting one program next month. So their students will be coming to our site. Again, without any funding, we are moving ahead with it. So the present layout has a lot of wasted space. And if you go to the new layout, that will cost a lot because the building is not up to code. It's going to be quite a significant, we are one room short. So we are thinking of reducing the size of the rooms on the lower end and make another classroom because currently we do use three classrooms and we are short. So I, I'm assuming we'll need minimum of three at least. Our future staffing and organization will change. Reason being, prior to that, the executive director was doing case management with seventeen staff, including the teachers, which left her no time for vision or moving forward with implementing strategic initiatives. Right now, Kirsty is the programs director. We have divided five and five. So what I envision is when we move forward, we'll have at least two managers to take the supervision offers. So we can implement strategic plans and envision a better T D Kala for the community. Now, the contingencies and restrictions we have are each grant is restricted on each other. We don't receive one, we're not going to receive any. And that leaves us going dark. Town of Tabor has approved one fifty as a ten-year loan, interest-free. We are grateful to them. C F A P grant of expression has been accepted. I have spoken to them. The monies will come in March of two thousand and twenty-five. So it's very specifically for renovations. We can use it towards the purchase. That leaves our reserves with less than ten thousand operational expense. If even one, well, it's only M D of Tabor right now, the other two have come forward. So if we don't receive our grant here, loan here, we don't receive any monies at all. And keeping in mind, keeping twenty-five percent of reserve for unforeseen circumstances to prevent us from going dark, I would request this as a grant to move forward towards the purchase and not for renovations. And if you could increase that to two fifty, if that request is accepted, I would, it's, I will be humbled. I'll be very grateful. What are we doing to circumvent many of the incidents is we have a charity arm, Friends of Tabor. But not a whole lot has been done for, with it. We have five hundred industry standard online training, which we are not promoting. And for that, I will be moving forward with a marketing specialist and a fundraising specialist, at least for a year, to give us some direction or more if we need to. To achieve our goal, we will be engaging, yes, I mentioned, Ukrainian evacuees, government-assisted refugees, temporary foreign workers and youth, and shall present legacy and major gift donors from across Canada. So I am in the process of harvesting donors already. But for that, we need a better website and first we have to get our ducks in a row to approach them because the first thing any donor does is goes to the website. But we have already registered with Canada Helps and that donor button is on our website already. So the first step has been taken. So our proposal, which I mentioned, ideally six months of wages and rent budget. That's ideal, but a minimum of twenty-five percent would be the bare minimum we need to keep in our reserves. So that's why I was requesting two hundred and fifty thousand and as a grant towards the purchase and not for renovations, which, which holds us, which helps us rather. What we will do is, and many have asked, what are my plans? I'm not going anywhere. I'm here to stay. I've invested a lot. I've purchased a home already. The closing hasn't been done. I'm not going anywhere. I'm going to stay with T D Kala until I'm pushed out or retire. So my, what I envision is, to be honest, within the ten years, start a bridging program for internationally trained professionals. First do a case study of who are the international year professionals and what are they looking for, what degrees they have. Start a program, start a youth and tech coding for women because women are left behind in rural communities. Light warehouse training for women wanting to return to the workforce. And I have built these programs in Toronto, so I know how to build them again. Skill trades apprenticeship program for youth. And I envision in another ten years, T D Kala will have the second floor completed with a minimum staff size of twenty-five, delivering additional two to three programs and services in the municipality district of Tabor. We're hoping to receive the settlement fund grant, which the former past E D had submitted for newcomer settlement. So we have one from the Alberta government, another one is restricted with another organization. And that one will leave us completely independent of serving the newcomer. And we have some success stories or Q and A. Which one would you like to go first? So let's go with the success stories. We have Maria here. She is one of the success stories as well. And she works for us. She came as a client.
My name is Maria Friesen. I was born and raised in an old, old colony, Mennonite community in Mexico. I was fortunate that my parents put me in a Christian school instead of a colony school. So I learned to read and write high German. And reading, however, was a challenge. My family was in Canada when I was five. In the school they sent me to, an optometrist who told my parents I would definitely need glasses before I started grade one. My father's attitude was if I don't buy them, she does not have to wear them. This is a very common attitude in old colony communities for anything that could be considered a visible disability. I failed many tests because I couldn't see very well. At the age of seventeen, I saved enough money to buy my own glasses. In two thousand and nineteen, I moved to Canada with my husband Martin and our poor children. I am a Canadian citizen by descent. My grandparents were born in Canada. Martin found work right away. I, I waited until my youngest was in school to find a job. I'd been a stay-at-home mom for fourteen years. So this was a very difficult task. I finally found a part-time job working evenings and weekends at a gas station. I saw the G E D poster at a Mennonite grocery store in Boxhall and knew that this was the only, the only way I would find better employment. I enrolled in January two thousand and twenty-two class and paid for the classes by making it and selling crocheted pot holders. The classes were hard and I considered giving up many times. A friend who taught English classes for T D Kala offered to tutor me in maths. In addition, there was a hybrid Monday evening math class that I watched on Zoom while I was at work. I was determined to, to pass the G E D. My oldest daughter was insisting that she would quit school after grade nine because many of the Mennonite teenagers were doing that. Work is more valuable than the than education in the traditional Mennonite culture. I made a deal that that my daughter would stay in school if I got my G E D. In May of two thousand and twenty-two, I passed all my G E D exams and made an appointment with T D Kala to get a resume and job coaching from Tabor Employment Assistance Program. And Linda Nico asked me what I really wanted to do. And I replied that I wanted to be a low German translator, to be the bridge between the low German and the English, that they can be successful in what they do. Linda called me to tell me there might be a job available if she could forward my phone number to the director. We set up an interview. It was very nerve-wracking to be able to go for an interview with a diploma under my belt. The last question that I had was, what are my wage expectations? It was, I was shocked what the difference was between very little education to a G E D. I was offered the job of a low German translator and started working at T D Kala on July fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-two. My daughter and all my children saw the effort I put into the G E D class and understood the importance of education as a way to improve their lives. They will all graduate from high school. During my appointments with low German-speaking clients and their teenage children, I encouraged them to can, to continue their education, no matter what level they are at currently. I have referred people to their alternative high school, to youth employment program, A B E, G E D, and English classes and work foundations with some success. Thank you.
Um, we we do, we did send a link. I don't know if um, he has joined or accepted. No, okay. Um, I do have permission to read our next success story. Let me pull it up here. Um, so this is from Elvero Mendez with Community Futures. So he gave us permission to share his story. And I'll just read it from, in his words. I am deeply honored to share my story as requested, especially given the significant impact that the Taboran District Community Adult Learning Association has had on my journey since arriving in this community. My connection with T D Kala began out of necessity. I needed help setting up my electricity bill for my rental home. What started as a simple request for assistance quickly blossomed into a relationship that would shape my entire settlement and integration experience. With me recognizing my need to improve my English skills, T D Kala provided me with access to tutors and classes, which were instrumental in my preparation for the CELP test. The support I received went beyond language instruction. It extended to the understanding the nuances of Canadian culture and the day-to-day activities that are essential for building a new life here. Through every step of my journey, I have always felt supported by T D Kala. This organization is more than just a service provider. It is a crucial asset for newcomers, offering guidance, resources, and a sense of community that are invaluable during the often overwhelming process of settling into a new country. Today, as a member of the Tabor community, I can look back and see how pivotal T D Kala has been in my transition from a newcomer seeking help with basic necessities to someone who is now integrated and contributing to the community. The programs, resources, and people at T D Kala have not only helped me succeed, but have also enriched my understanding and appreciation of the life we build together in this wonderful town. Thank you for allowing me to share my experience. I hope that my story can serve as a testament to the profound impact that organizations like T D Kala can have on the lives of those they touch.
Thank you. All right, so as you mentioned, then the next part is the Q and A. So at this time, I'll ask council if they have any questions or if they want to make any comments.
Just wondering, with this new building and what, what you're planning on doing here? How, how will this, so the, my understanding is that your reserves you have currently, the cash reserves, are through operational efficiencies? And how will the new building, I guess, help in that? And what other ways will it help in the business model that you're, you're showing here?
So our cash, excuse me, our cash reserves are going towards the purchase. So we won't have any really results left to say. We'll have maybe ten thousand. So there's a building permits up to code. If we were to, I know Alberta has signed the accessibility law of government of Canada to be implemented in three years. So if we build another layer, we need an elevator which, as we informed, is going to be a minimum, just the cost, not the labor or the taxes, hundred and fifty thousand, which is a ten-year plan, which is not for today. But we do intend to leave that space for the elevator, which would be in the back. There would be interview rooms for sole purpose of client confidentiality. Right now, we don't have it. We scramble for whichever empty space we find. We'll have a proper classroom setting, not a boardroom for the G E D, English-speaking folks. And I'll, I'll give an example, and this happens. Even Cindy had requested, even I had requested, they didn't buy. The government of Alberta does these fire drills at their own will without informing us. And last time we did it, they did it. We were having G E D exams going on. If, if those students leave their room, they fail the exams. And Cindy stood her ground and said, find us if you want. We are not leaving the building, right? I brought it up. So these things are, these risks are going to be mitigated. We have started a new thing, citizenship ceremonies at our site because now they're gone. We have two citizenship ceremonies happening tomorrow and one day after tomorrow. And all of you are welcome to attend if you wish to. We can send you the timings. We don't want those interrupted either. We need rooms for those. This will be a very community organization. We already work as a drop-in center without having drop-in facilities. We'll have those facilities that youth want to come in and there are many who are unemployed who don't want services. They just want a computer terminal to do the interview practice or online resumes. Those resources are also built into our new plan, just near the reception. If you see the new plan I posted, it's there. But we will have a boardroom, absolutely. But we will have another classroom for the youth program as well. Currently, our youth program is sharing with Alcoholics Anonymous simply because we don't have any other option. And some of them do walk in while they're muted in high class. Some of them may have a court parole or something where they cannot be close to a youth or a female. We cannot mitigate that risk right now. With our own site, we will be able to, and that is a huge risk. So keeping all of that in consideration and in mind and with the risk of going dark, hopefully not, we have moved forward with removing the financial conditions and all this thing. So the building is ours, but we, we are completely depleted of our reserves. The business case I presented earlier, how it's going to benefit the community. The homeless will have a place to apply for jobs. One of the cases I had done when doing the employment case was a youth who used to sleep in class and my staff would say we are going to evict, exit him. I said, no, no one's doing that. Let's speak to him after. We spoke to him and he said, I'm homeless. I sleep in the washroom of the malls. Sometimes the security catches me and evicts me. Otherwise, I spend the night. Sometimes I get a gig for night shifts. That's why I'm sleeping in the house. He was honest. We found him a shelter, a youth shelter. They have fourteen days to evacuate you. I spoke to the E D directly and I said, give us two more weeks because we have found him a job. Let him become stable. We got him stable and this is five years ago, but still he sometimes likes to me, say thank you. He can afford. It takes some homeless off the street, the employment programs that we serve. Language here, again, we will be able to enhance our language, help the Mennonite L G M communities, their youth who do want to study, get the G E D and then with my vision of apprenticeship program for youth, skills trade, we can transition them into that program. We have an M O U with Colair College. Classes are beginning from next month. I intend to have another M O U with Medicine Hat. Maybe they can have a satellite unit here. I had worked with University of Winchester for the Masters of Social Work program and they rented one of our sites, Family Services of Field, to deliver that program. But I'm thinking along those lines to bring Medicine College at the Satellite Campus here. So people have access to a college diploma without needing to travel because we lack public transport. With that, we will have capacity to hire more staff because we'll have more rooms. It's a larger site, nineteen hundred square feet, larger than what we have currently combined. We will deliver fee-for-service programs such as employment training to the lawyers, small businesses, H R best practices, what are employment standards. You can't just fire someone or make such a comment. You know, it goes against you in the long run. So we're going to educate lawyers at the same time. Provide them training on our website. We have over five hundred training, which we, I intend to make active as a fee-for-service and fundraising. There could be more. I mean, we're forgetting.
Thank you, covered.
I've covered.
Okay, thank you. Counsel Harris.
Okay, I've got a few questions for you. If I remember correctly, you were talking about it going to cost four hundred thousand dollars for the building. Is that correct?
Or maybe more because we have one room shot in the plan and we need to build another. So we're going to make the offices a bit smaller. Squeeze them. So some more walls. Squeeze them. So some more walls, at least three more walls will have to come down to build another.
Okay, and then you've applied for two hundred and fifty thousand from the government and you're asking for two hundred and fifty here? And you've got the commitment for a hundred and fifty from the town of Tabor. So that's six hundred and fifty thousand dollars. And where's that going? Is that going into the cost of the purchasing the building and the renovations or?
So the town of Tabor and the C F A grant are restricted to us renovations.
Just renovations?
And hundred and fifty we have to return back to the town of Tabor. So we won't be having that anymore.
And then you talked about having, just let me look here, sorry. Unrestricted reserves, is that, where did I read that? So do you have restricted reserves? Like, do you have more money set aside that's restricted or?
We have restricted.
And what, what is that for? Like, what can you use that money for?
Those are, and I believe G I C and investments. So even if you take them out, we'll have to pay about thirty percent tax on it. But if the board decides to move ahead with that, then I will.
But in your bylaws or whatever you've got, is there, if you've got restricted reserves, what can you use that for?
I'm, I'm not sure. I'm new to TD Kala. I haven't read the charter or agreement, but I don't think it's for capital costs.
Okay.
Edwin, just come on up and introduce yourselves, and we have to use the mic so that way you can answer that. Thank you.
Yeah, sorry. Yeah, I'm the board chair for the Tabor District Community Adult Learning. And yeah, she's odd as news, so he's kind of getting thrown into the fire here. Yeah, so some, some of those restricted reserves, the purpose of them is to maintain, because we're all grant funded, we need to ensure that we've got a little bit of a buffer zone in between granting and stuff like that. And so we've got a few hundred thousand dollars that is really gives us about three months of operational expenses in case we drop under or something like that. So maintain our staff levels and all that kind of stuff. So.
So that's what your restricted portion is for, is just for, so then you've got unrestricted reserves also? Is that, did I read that right somewhere here?
Yeah. Yeah.
And then the last question, and last one for now, you talked about in your slide here about a mortgage. And is that just when you're talking mortgage, you're talking about the money that you have to pay back to the town? Is that what you're, or is it mortgage on the building?
Hypothetical situation, we are not eligible for a mortgage. The bank requires us to have a very regular L D stream of income, which we don't. We go from contracts to contracts, lending to funding. But if we were and we received a mortgage for, let's say, five hundred thousand, our mortgage, taxes, electricity, and all will not be more than two thousand six hundred a month. So we will actually, even if the higher interest rate today, we would be paying fifty four thousand annually, but our rent is sixty nine thousand plus tax, plus utilities, et cetera. So it takes us well over seventy thousand.
Okay.
So we would be saving ten to fifteen thousand if we purchased the building.
And, and all this is, he's saying is it's a hypothetical situation, even if we were to purchase the building under normal circumstances with funding or with, with the mortgage, if we were to get into this building, our operational expenses will actually still decrease compared to the rent that we're paying now. And it is worth noting, the rent that we have right now with the province of Alberta is fairly reasonable. But in the last, the last time we had to renew that, the rent did double. And that's anticipated that that rent will go up. So this gives us an opportunity to be in a situation where we're kind of our own masters. We aren't beholden to the markets and stuff like that, and we can continue operating and putting some of that money towards programming rather than to rent or stuff like that.
And the last question, I'm going to put Edwin on the spot.
Oh.
When you say the building has to be brought up to code, how, how many surprises are you going to have that you're not going to be able to fund?
Yeah, so because I've been doing this for, I guess, long enough, I, the, the biggest things that we come up with in renovations like this, typically now is the heating and ventilating. And so we've anticipated a big portion of the renovation is going to be for that. Another big chunk is going to be for repairing the roof. And then the rest is superficial. So you can't really run into too much, too many surprises, I guess, as far as that know, as that goes. We know that, you know, we're going to need to remove some partition walls and put in some new partition walls and then relocate some of the plumbing. But there isn't a whole lot that you can run into surprises, I guess, in, in that regard. Yeah, we've been, I, I've always, when I've looked at projects like this, I'm the kind of guy that always overshoots with thinking it's going to cost X amount. Okay, well, let's times that by another fifty percent to make sure we're good. We have spoken with a number of general contractors. We aren't going to be contracting this ourselves. You know, and we haven't got hard quotes back from them yet, but the indication is that what we're looking at will be within that budget.
Hey. Keep up the good work.
Yeah.
As a, as a TD Kala, keep up the good work. You serve a good portion of our community in ways that need to be done in our community.
Any other questions? So my question or comment is that in the event that we didn't have this service, it would change the dynamic of our community. I believe the last time we had a presentation from the E D, they spoke of how many different languages are being served and new cultures are being served out of TD Kala. But it is so much more than just the new people as well. It has become a place of employment, a place of allowing people to come and ask questions for their resume, to seek new jobs as well as for employers. We have nowhere in Tabor that has that. So TD Kala has become that due to changes in how the Alberta government is delivering services. They needed to find their own efficiencies, but with those organizations leaving, it left our community in a void. And because of the no one left behind, it has allowed our community to continue to prosper and rise people up who maybe haven't. My past employment was with an outreach school. There are some who can't manage at an outreach school, but TD KAL is yet programmed, allowed students to find meaningful employment and find a purpose in the community, not just a job. So for me, it's very important. I'll tell you that I am a grant is, makes me anxious because it isn't our money. It's everyone's money in the M D of Tabor. So we will have to have some deliberations. I, my question, so first of all, word, I believe in TD Kala. I think it's invaluable to the M D of Tabor and the town of Tabor. But what I would like to know is if we were only consented to a loan, is it viable for TD Kala?
You'd answer that if you want to.
You're good.
Okay. Yeah, so like we mentioned, I, I guess, in, on the one slide there, it does, we have stated that if we were to finance this project, we would be able to do it. It would be even better, of course, if we had funding from the municipality that had no interest. That makes that better. Best would be that we get that money as a grant because then we can put that money towards offering other programming instead. So we understand municipalities are under constraints because everyone, there's a lot that needs to be done and limited resources. So yes, that is a decision you guys need to make as far as what you can do for us here. You know, Shazad, I don't know if you mentioned it, we've been in the community for a long time. We do a lot here and are going to continue to do a lot here. And I think that we do, I don't know, I, I guess before I came on board, I never really knew what TD Kala did. And it's like, it's this entity that kind of flies under the radar, but actually does a whole lot for the community. And so we don't maybe get as much recognition as some of the other things that happen in town, but there's a lot that goes on there and there's a lot of people that are helped here. So we'd be very gracious if we could have that money received as a grant. But if that isn't the case, we are in a position where we think that we would be able to manage without it.
I would like to add one thing. Yes, it's taxpayers' money, the community. We being a nonprofit organization, a charity organization, we are going to be putting the money back into the community and serving the same taxpayers. We're not a big corporation that's going to give bonuses and use the taxpayers' money for ulterior motives. It's going back to the community. That's all I have to say. And even if it's a loan, yes, we'll survive. But then the other ask is if it could be increased from one fifty to two fifty. So that will help us with the purchase and we can return that money slowly, slowly over a period of time. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Okay, anyone else from council or administration want to ask a question prior to closing the presentation? And then we, we have further discussion with our council later in the agenda. But I just want to give anyone else an opportunity. Do they have a question?
Prior to this meeting, you brought up an industrial kitchen that would be quite costly and require HVAC upgrades above and beyond. Is that still part of the plan? Is that not in the new plan?
Not in the new plan. It's, I had to rethink. Yes, it's going to be a huge cost, but it's also an opportunity cost because we cannot guarantee anyone's going to be renting that kitchen from us. E S D C is not pro the cooking classes anymore for the youth program. So we'll have to taper that and change that with something more meaningful. So what we are going to use that room, we were going to use for the kitchen, there's a loading dock at the back. We will just be putting energy efficient, green energy glass windows and make them into a meeting space. And the next door is, not next door, this neighbor, the, the door after will be the fire exits. So we'll have two fire exits, one main entrance. That will bring us to code as well.
Yeah, so I guess what he's saying, there's no, we're not doing a commercial kitchen now. Possible for one in the future, depending on how, you know, things are fluid and to do something like that, you need to have a number of things in place and we don't have all those things in place right now. So we're going to focus on what our core is with the plan of, of growth.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, anything from admin at this time? Okay, thank you. All right. Well, thank you very much for coming today and especially for sharing Alvaro and for Maria. Thank you for taking the time. You speak to the success and accomplishments that TD Kala has had. You're one of hundreds, perhaps thousands at this point. So thank you for sharing your experience with us directly. And thank you both for bringing, all three of you for bringing forward the proposal. So we'll discuss it later. And then our admin team will connect with you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Reeve DeGroot, Council members.
Yeah.
Appreciate your time.
Oh. Yeah.
Thank you. Hi, how are you?
Okay, so ten to ten. Next on our agenda, so should we should receive that? Okay, so perhaps we should just bring forward the R C M P report so it's in front of us. So five point two point one is the R C M P report. And you have received the information and Sergeant Gemmell isn't able to attend today. So we can just accept it for information and then at the upcoming meeting, he can speak to it. Would that be? So we just look for a motion to receive the report?
I can give you a motion to receive the R C M P report as presented.
Any questions? Those in favor. That's accept, that's passed. Thank you. Oh, yeah. And then the TD Kala, do you want us to receive the presentation? Or just since we have it at the next item? Okay, yeah, that sounds good. Okay, council, do you want to take five minute, a minute or two? Are you ready to go? Okay, we're, we'll continue on with the agenda. So we have our financial statements from K P M G. So we'll just give them a moment to get set up and then I'll turn it over to Mike. Or Derek could just let you know next.
Yeah.
Whichever is best. Well, unfortunately, it's not as smooth it, and next is pretty good. We, we are quite used to that and we don't mind. So welcome, Derek. While you're just finishing getting prepared, we'll introduce council to you. And I know you know most of us, but, and then we'll give you a chance to introduce yourself. So just so that you're aware, Counselor Brian Hildebrand is away today. He represents the Grassy Lake area. Deputy Reeve Degroot is also away. He represents the Hayes area, and then I'll just continue.
Joan Chuketo, Division Two, which is south of Tabor.
Tamara Mianega, Division Four, which is north of Tabor.
Chantal Clausen, Division Seven, Foxall area.
Marie Reynolds, Division Six, Inchen area.
Merrill Harris, Division One, Tabor West.
And then I'll just turn it over to Mike to start the introduction of the process.
Thank you. So as we finish each year, we have to, the M J requires us to submit us to final statements and audit passengers to the province. And so this year, we've employed K P M G to do so, and they were able to come to the Tabor on, or come to, come to town and, and ride those services and, and have prepared all their findings and their statements into consolidated final statements, which we have Derek Taylor here to present to you today. I believe the plan is to kind of start from the closed session to give council the chance to speak with Derek, run the final statements, and then once, once satisfied in that area, then go back to open session where Derek will then present the financial statements for public record and then council may motion to approve those.
Okay, if that's satisfactory with council, then we will ask for a motion to go into closed.
I can move to go into closed.
Thank you. Any questions? Those in favor? We will go into close at nine fifty-four. That's approved. You guys will just have to make sure though. You guys will just have to make sure though. The only, the only caution I have, Lace, is that then, I mean, if we go because I doubt they can edit the Zoom. Right? It's not like a video. Yeah, I think so. And then we'll come back. Okay, we require motion to come out of closed. Okay, thank you. Any questions? Those in favor? Okay, we'll come out of close at ten fifty A M. And we'll turn our time back to K P M G auditor, Mr. Derek Taylor, to go through our findings.
So as I'd mentioned a little bit earlier, so we have completed our audits and are prepared to issue an unqualified audit opinion subject to the finishing up of our discussion here. The audit report is very consistent with what you would have seen in prior years. With the exception that there's an other matters paragraph added at the very bottom as the prior year's statements were audited by another auditor. So that's kind of the only difference you probably notice on the audit opinion. The audit opinion takes through, talks about the fact that we conduct our audit in accordance with Canadian auditing standards. The audit report further goes through and talks about our responsibilities under those standards. And of course, does talk also about management's and, and your responsibilities as the financial statements are the M D's. The first page with numbers on it. And I'm not sure if that's, if we've got it or we're presenting it yet, is the statement of financial position. And the statement of financial position is essentially a snapshot of where the M D was at December thirty first. Now, one of the key things that we will note is that the comparative numbers have been restated. And the reason for this restatement was the adoption of the asset retirement obligations framework. So there's a note there that talks about the differences. So again, what that means is that if we were to take last year's statements and look at the twenty-two numbers and compared to the comparatives in the statements here, they would be different. And note three shows the numbers as previously stated and then talks about what those adjustments are. So there's a very lengthy and information filled note. So what I'm going to do now is just going to take us through the financial statements and talk about some of the variances from the prior year. And then if there are any questions while we're going through this, please feel free to, to interrupt me. So looking at the very top, our cash and short term investments, we'll note that we're down from the prior year. And later on, we will go through a state, the statement of cash flows, which we'll explain this a little bit further. But what this really, why we see this decrease here is that the cash outflow largely as a relations to our investment in our capital assets, in particular, the spillway exceeded the cash that came in this year. So we just, we spent more on those, there's more investment in those assets, including some of those assets that are going to be, you know, transferred out after the projects are finished. Our taxes and grants and lieu receivable, you see that that sees a bit of an increase over the prior year. That's because again, we've, we changed during the year, we changed kind of when we were doing taxes in that process. So just the timing of when those were, we see that increase there. Trade and other receivables, we also see kind of a, a significant increase there. The main reason for that increase, and sorry to do up my notes here, is we do have a, have a significant amount due from, from Cypress County with regards to the spillway. And then there's about one point four additional receivables this year from the province related to, to one of our road construction projects. So those were kind of amounts that we will receive after year end. Land held for resale, another area where we saw an increase there. That's with regards to the Enchant subdivision. So again, we spent a bit more money there. So we see some costs going up there. Other financial assets, a very small number that's going to fluctuate depending upon what's going on. And then our long term investments, there's a note there on that as well. We see a small increase there just to some return on those investments. Overall, when we look at our financial assets, pretty consistent with the prior year. Moving down to our liabilities, so these are kind of our obligations, if you will, that we have. Again, overall, we do see an increase there, taking us through some of those items. Our accounts payable and accrued liabilities, we see quite an increase there of about eight hundred thousand. A lot of that relates actually to graph excavating, just for some of the projects we had on the go near year ends, we had that payable at year end. Our trust funds, there's a note that goes through this a little bit later. We saw a slight increase there. Deferred revenue, we actually see a decrease this year from the prior year. But on the flip side, down below, a little bit lower, we see our contractual obligations number increase quite a bit. This is our spillway amount of project. So again, money's coming in, we're accumulating assets that are going to be some are going to end up ours, some are going to be transferring out. And some of this is basically, we've kind of, we're deferring that revenue. So I spoke a little bit earlier about estimates. So even though we've received the money and we've spent the money, we haven't met the stipulations on completing that project yet. So we just haven't recognized those revenues. Employee benefit obligation, we see a slight decrease there. Again, sometimes that's just depending upon when our final pay, pay, pay period is during the year and those types of things. Long term debt, we see that coming down. That's just our regular scheduled repayments of our obligations. Our asset retirement obligation. So again, this is a new item this year. I spoke a little bit earlier about how the prior year's been restated for that new framework. This is that new framework coming in. So this is our obligation, this is our estimates on, if we were to look at all of our, our tangible capital assets and other items out there where we may have an obligation around retirement of those items. They've been recorded here. You see an increase over the prior year, just to take into account, you know, any new assets or any accretion in those obligations. So you went back to twenty-two. Is that as far back as you need to go or does it go back? It goes back farther. Okay. So, so what you'll notice is that when we get to the statement of operations, you're not going to see seventeen million dollar expense. You're going to see the accretion from those years. So the idea is that you'd go back to when these assets were, were acquired. You would set up an asset obligation and an asset, an asset retirement asset and an asset retirement obligation attached to them. The asset retirement asset portion of it gets amortized over time. And the obligation's going to grow over time because what it's trying to take into account that you have the time value of money, the accretion of, you know, inflation and all those types of things. So you go back to when some of these assets have been acquired. They may have been acquired in the seventies. You know, at that point in time, maybe the asset and the obligation was lower. But if we come from the seventies to now, I was born in the seventies, that was a long time ago. That's a lot of years. You have that obligation growing from the seventies to now, right? And it's just from inflation and time value of money. So, so with that, I guess, process, so let's say we re revitalize a road that was once an asset, so the liability's gone up. Now, when you rehab that road, does the liability then go down? Or how does that work? It will. So let's say, for instance, an easier one would be around asbestos. So if we, let's say we have a building and we've got asbestos in it, so right now you have an obligation attached to that. If you go in and you were to abate that asbestos, then that obligation comes off. And instead of being expensed, when you paid for it, it reduces that obligation. So what you're trying to take into account is that you've always had this asbestos in the building and the cost of abating it has gone, is going to go up over time. When you ultimately abate it, we've already recognized the expense over time and we just get rid of the obligation. Right? So you could, let's say we only have one asset retirement obligation attached to one building for asbestos. And we've booked it at eighteen million and it only costs sixteen million, then you would have actually gain on the, on, on the retirement because you are, you're trying to estimate when this is going to occur. But that's the idea is that you've gone back as far back as you can to identify these assets and obligations and then you're bringing them forward. Contractual obligations on here, similar to the prior year, this is where we're accumulating the obligation similar to deferred revenue attached to that spillway project. Below that, we get into an item that's called net financial assets, net debt. We'll notice that we shifted into a net debt position this year. And the main reason for that is just the accumulation of the assets that are going to be used in that spillway project. So the spillway project has a significant impact on your financial statements. Because the expenses that we've incurred towards the project are not considered financial assets. They're considered non-financial assets. They sit below the net deadline. So once you've settled this program out, the obligations attached, those are going to disappear and you'll probably, you, you will see yourselves return to that net financial asset position. But this year, you're in a net debt position because what that net financial asset, net debt line item is supposed to replicate is that if we were to take our financial assets, less our obligations or liabilities, that's what we have there. Right now, we have a significant amount of obligations where the assets attached to those obligations are down in our non-financial assets. Then moving down to our non-financial assets, prepaid expenses, we see a modest increase there. Again, sometimes this is just a case of kind of, you know, when we look at types of things that are in there, insurance and those types of things are timing of when we have those expenditures. Sometimes they go up a little bit. So that modest change there. Tangible capital assets. So this represents our hard assets, including some of the assets that will be associated with the spillway. We do see a significant increase there. And again, this is when we acquire those assets, they're set up at cost and then they're amortized over their estimated useful life. Then we've got our inventories for consumptions, very consistent with the prior year, slight decrease. Those often will kind of vary just due to kind of the timing of when we have purchases or what we're using near year end. Overall, at the very bottom, we have our accumulated surplus. Cumulated surplus is basically the M D's residual ownership and its assets less its obligations. We see an increase there going from a hundred and fifty-two to a hundred and fifty-nine. And that's really basically because we have a positive excess of revenues over expenditures this year. We go to the next page, we have our statement of operations. What this page tries to do is it tries to tell the story of what occurred in the M D financially throughout the year. So if we start the very top, we kind of have our operating revenue. Overall, operating revenue went from twenty-three million to twenty-five million. We kind of started the top to look at some of those variances. We got our property taxes, we see a slight increase there. A lot of that's just due to increases in rates and, and assessments. Our user fees and sales of goods, we see an increase there. A lot of that has to do with our bulk, bulk water sales this year. So again, as we've had drier, drier couple summers, seen a little bit more water sales there. Rentals, those are going to fluctuate sometimes according to what's occurring. Our investment income, we do see a nice increase there over the prior year. A lot of that has to do with the amount of cash we are holding throughout the year, but also just the interest rates. So over the last few years, we've seen interest rates go up. We're starting to see them go down now, but there's always a lag on your income as the kind of, as you're reinvesting the money, you'll hit those higher rates. And then as they come down, you'll slowly see a decrease there. Government transfers for operating, so a little bit of a decrease there from the prior year. This again, just depends on kind of when, what programs we're receiving funding for and when we're experiencing those. The other revenue line items, we do see some small fluctuations in as well, but those are kind of the big ones. Moving down, we've got our expenses. So overall, we did see our, our expenses increase from twenty-one million to twenty-two million. Again, those are going to come across a number of things. A lot of those have to do with kind of the activities that we've got going on. As well as later on, when we show our expenses by, by object, we'll notice things like compensation and those types of things fluctuating because of our cost of living adjustments that we have and all of those types of things. But overall, relatively speaking, when we look at our expenses, they were relatively consistent. We moved down into our other revenues. We have our government capital funding, so three point eight million this year compared to three point one. A lot of that has to do, again, we had some additional capital projects or capital assets going up and we're seeing some of those items there. And then, like I said, at the, if we look close to the bottom, we have our excess of revenues over expenditures of about six point five. So that takes into account our increase in our accumulated surplus. Go to the next page, please. So the next page takes us through our changes in net financial assets. So again, this is where I mentioned earlier that we moved from a net financial asset position to a net financial, net debt position this year. So again, when we look at kind of what's, what, why we have that fluctuation there. We start off taking, bringing in your excess of revenues over expenditures, we adjust for the acquisition of those capital assets. And then we back out things like amortization fluctuations in prepaid expenses and inventory. So why we see that large change this year is clearly a result of the twenty-two million dollars in new capital assets this year. The next page is our statement of cash flows. And for anybody who's had the unfortunate luck of having to listen to me to take you through a set of financial statements. The statement of cash flows is, is a really good statement to look at. Whether you're looking at a municipality and not-for-profit or a for-profit entity. Because what it allows you to do is really kind of look at what the narrative for the entity is for the year. From, you know, from a cash perspective, right? So when we look at it, at the very top, we take our excess of revenues over expenditures. Then we back out non-cash expenses like our amortization and our loss on disposal of capital assets. And so that takes us at about ten million this year and close to ten million last year. Then we start looking at the next item where we have our changes in our non-cash assets and liabilities. So this shows us our changes in our receivables and our payables and how all of those impact our, our, our cash flow. To come down to a subtotal where it's seventeen million this year and eight million in the prior year. So if we were to look at our day-to-day operations, that's the amount of cash flow that's being generated from our day-to-day operation. So this year in particular, we see that it's much higher than the prior year and a lot of that has to do with that increase in that contractual obligations. And that's that increase in the amounts that we're, we're, you know, again, that's related to the spillway project. The key thing there is that our day-to-day operations generated seventeen million this year, eight million last year. So the next question is, well, if we generated seventeen million, you know, how come our cash, cash position actually didn't, you know, didn't go up by that much? So we started looking a little bit lower. We have acquisitions of tangible capital assets of twenty-two million this year. So seventeen million new came in the door, but we actually invested twenty-two, almost twenty-three million in new capital assets this year. Then we have some proceeds on disposal, disposition of older capital assets. So this is where we have capital assets that we're no longer using. So we sold them. That's the amount of cash that came in from those. We had a change in our restricted in our, our, our temporary investments. So that kind of impacts our cash flow as well. And then we have our, our proceeds or repayment of some of our long-term debt. At the end of the day, when we look at it, overall there, we see that our cash kind of went from fifty to forty-six this year. We factor out kind of the amounts that are restricted of twenty-one thirteen. Our, overall, our cash position went down. Our cash position that's available for day-to-day operations is actually up this year by about ten million dollars. But overall, cash went down because the amounts that we've got restricted gone down and that's because of the spillway. After that, we get into the notes of the financial statements. So the first couple of pages take us through the significant accounting policies used by the M D. So that goes from all the way to page nine. So those are your significant accounting policies. And the policies haven't changed from the prior year. So this is how you're accounting for transactions, how you're accounting for assets and those types of things. I don't have a nice enough voice to read those to you guys, but if you want to, at some point in time, I'd highly recommend you guys read them. Again, even though they haven't changed, it is important that you understand how things are accounted for appropriately. Starting on page nine, note two, we get into recent accounting pronouncements. So one of the items that I talked about earlier was that the framework is always continually changing within public sector. And so note two just talks about some of the changes that are occurring within the framework. As, as the frameworks can continue to change, we'll work with management to make sure where there are some, you know, where there might be some impacts on your financial statements that you're changing your accounting policies appropriately. On page eleven, note three, we have a change in accounting policy. So this is where we have some changes because of the new framework. So note three takes us over a couple of pages. The first page, page eleven, just talks about the asset retirement obligation section. The page twelve has a table on it, which takes our numbers and shows our numbers as previously reported. The adjustment as a result of the asset retirement obligation, then the restatement of those numbers on your current statements as presented. Note three further goes on to page thirteen to talk about some of the other sections that were also adopted that didn't have an impact on, on the M D's statements. Note four takes us to our cash and short term investments, showing the amount of cash that we're having on hand and then our amounts that are considered our temporary investments. So your temporary investments are going to be kind of high interest, very liquid items that are very close. So your temporary investments are going to be kind of high interest, very liquid items that are very close and similar to cash. So again, just kind of our our position being a little bit lower because of all the capital investment that we've had in this last year. Note five brings us to our taxes and grants in lieu. So again, we noticed this year that we did see that increase this year. But one thing that's good is that most of it is current taxes. So we didn't see a secret increase in our arrears amount. And again, the main reason for that increase there is just, again, the the changing in our our tax process this year. Our trade and other receivables. So note six, that's, we have that increase there. As I'd mentioned before, we have a bit of an increase from both government and and from some of our other municipal partners that are involved in the spillway program. Note seven talks about our long-term investments. We have our co-op equity and our UFA equity. Those amounts kind of fluctuating a little bit just based on kind of the the patronage amounts that are reinvested. Note eight gives us some information on the amounts that we're holding in trust. Note nine is a breakdown of her amounts that are sitting in deferred revenue. So in particular, we'll notice that our Alberta Community Resilience Program amount is down quite a bit from the prior year. And that our the Horsefly Regional Spillway Municipal Partner amounts up. Again, a lot of this has to do with the timing of when we've received cash and when we're doing the investments into the spillway, which again, once at the end of the day, when all the things are sorted out, those will get dealt with appropriate or be recognized into revenue once the stipulations attached are dealt with. Note ten, employee obligations on top page sixteen. We see there that we have a bit of a decrease there, a little bit of an increase in our our obligations attached to overtime, but we did see a bit of a decrease in our vacation. Sometimes that's going to fluctuate just kind of based on kind of timing and what's going on. It's interesting, a lot of municipalities, you know, you can see that overtime fluctuate depending on how much snowfall we get, you know, those types of things right at your end. So those things do happen. Note eleven just shows our our obligations or our long-term debt and the amounts that we're repaying on that. Note twelve takes us through some information on some of our related parties. So we have the two commissions, Highway Three and Vauxhall, and just some information on some of the transactions that we have with that entity. Note thirteen on page eighteen takes us through our accumulated surplus. So as I'd mentioned before, your accumulated surplus is kind of the residual ownership we have in our assets less all of our obligations. So it's kind of also important to kind of think about that residual ownership kind of being broken into three buckets. We're to look at the kind of about one-third of the way down that statement, you'll see a line item called equity intangible capital assets. That number there of one hundred and thirty-three, almost one hundred and thirty-four million is basically the net book value of your assets less any obligation. So it means less the asset retirement obligations, less the loans associated with the capital assets. Basically, it it's it's the residual ownership in that net book value again of those assets. Then we've got a restricted surplus. So these are reserves that have been set up, set aside over the years. So it has gone down from twenty-six to just about twenty-five million this year. And again, that's going to fluctuate depending upon what projects were you doing, how much we've set aside for various reserves and those types of things. Then we've got our unrestricted surplus. This is an area where we saw the biggest kind of change there. And a lot of that is because we, with regards to kind of the spending of the those amounts into our tangible capital assets. When we invest money into our tangible capital assets, it moves from our unrestricted to our equity and capital assets. So where we saw that increase in our equity capital assets, we have less money that would be available for unrestricted day-to-day operations outside of our reserves. One question I often get asked is how much should entities have in reserves? That's always a difficult question to answer to municipalities, because every municipality is going to depend on kind of what our future plans are for those those amounts, right? But we're not holding a whole lot in our unrestricted surplus. So that's kind of just, you know, you guys are have clearly kind of earmarked most of our surpluses for specific purposes. Note fourteen takes us through our asset retirement obligation. So again, just kind of showing the the value that's being carried forward plus the accretion. So again, that accretion, if we go back to kind of that discussion we had before where the obligation is set up at some point in time and we're trying to take into account that it will, you know, it 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 kind of goes up over time unless we we satisfy that obligation. So that's just the accretion or the growth as a result of inflation in the time value of money. Note fifteen is our debt limits. So debt limits are just, this is a note required by the MGA. So you have debt limits based on kind of our revenue and then we just show how much you've used towards those debt limits and the servicing limits. Oh, sorry. Yep.
We're showing the money we receive and that we have for the Horsefly Lake spillway coming in, going out. But that asset isn't ours at the end. So we're passing that off to someone else. How is that then shown in our books?
So currently, and so we've continued kind of the accounting that you've done, been doing it for for the in the past. Basically, what's happening is the cash is coming in. And so when it first comes in, it'll sit as a deferred revenue. And as you spend it, it's going down to your contractual obligations. And then the spending part, the other side of it is accumulating your TCA, your tangible capital assets. Then at some point in time, you're going to have the disposition or transfer those assets over to whatever partners are they're going to. And some of them, you will still retain some of the assets, right? And the ones that you aren't will get transferred out, be shown as an expense at that point in time. So when you have that expense or that disposition, that's when you're going to recognize the revenue.
So at that point, will it kind of show as come almost like a loss then?
No, because you you haven't been recognizing the revenue because you're accumulating as a as a deferred revenue or as a contractual obligation. So that'll come into revenue at the same time that you transfer out those expenses. So you've been accumulating them next to each other as an asset and obligation that will kind of offset through your statement of operations when you de-recognize those assets.
Thank you.
Note sixteen takes us through kind of the local authorities pension plan, as well as the apex amounts, just talking about some of the contributions that we've made. And as well as the employees' contributions. Note seventeen talks about our segmented disclosures. So a little bit later, we have a schedule two that takes us through, earlier, our statement of operations showed kind of all of our expenses by function. Later on, we have a a schedule that shows our expenses and our revenues by function and by object. So let's just kind of define some of those those segmented disclosures. Page twenty-four, note eighteen, Alberta regulations require certain disclosures of amounts paid out to counselors as well as to the CAO. So just some required disclosure there. Note nineteen, financial interests or instruments, sorry. This is a note that's just, again, for information purposes, where if there was any significant interest rate or credit concentration or liquidity risk or market risk that wasn't already discussed somewhere else in the financial statements, it would have to be discussed here. If you had something like cocoa futures, it would be discussed in there. Bitcoin, you don't have any of those things. So that's what would be there. Note twenty talks about contingent liabilities. So it talks a little bit about the Munich's membership that we have similar to prior years. And just twenty-one contractual rights, just talks about some of our contractual rights with regards to some of our rent and oil lease agreements. Twenty-two contractual liabilities. So this talks a little bit more about that about the spillway program. And again, the amounts that are being accumulated and incurred under the project. Twenty-three talks about when the budget that's presented was approved. Twenty-four, ultimately, these financial statements need to be approved by council management. Twenty-five comparative information. So as part of the restatement and part of you get some reclassification of some of your expenses. So this just indicates that there are some reclassifications. Page twenty-seven, we get into some of the schedules. Schedule one just takes us to our government transfers, kind of indicates where we're receiving some of our funding from, from operating and from capital purposes. Schedule two, this is that segmented disclosure. So again, taking our statement of operations and breaking it out by the various kind of groupings as well as our functions, as well as by our our objects. So some of the key things here, if we were to look at, I spoke about earlier, is when we look at kind of our expenses increasing, see a bit of an increase in our salaries, wages and benefits. A lot of that has to do with our cost of living adjustments, bit of an increase in our contracted and general services. A lot of that, again, is just going to be dependent upon some of the projects that we have on the go. You know, some of our 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 projects that aren't necessarily capitalized, but are more repairer in nature and those types of things. Schedule three, our changes in accumulated surplus. So I spoke about our accumulated surplus kind of being three different buckets. Our equity and capital assets, our restricted surpluses, our reserves and our unrestricted. This page here just showing the relationship between those buckets. And again, kind of the key thing to look at there is that we've had fair amount of money come out of our unrestricted and get put into our our tangible and capital assets as we kind of moved, moved that investment in there. And we also saw a similar thing occurring within some of our reserves, some of the money that we've set aside in the past or capital projects, we've spent it and it's sitting now in our equity and capital assets. Schedule four is a schedule of net municipal property taxes. So this shows our gross levy less our requisitions. Schedule five, again, just another way of looking at our expenses. So this is our expenses specifically by object. And again, I spoke about some of the key variances there earlier. And then page thirty-two, schedule of tangible capital assets. So this just shows kind of our the accumulation of our our tangible capital assets less our accumulated amortization. It's a hundred-yard dash through your financial statements does not do justice for all the work that your team put in. But
Schedule four doesn't show, and where it shows linear taxes, it doesn't show the unpaid portion of oil and gas. So how is that? Is that not shown in our financials? Is that just shown in our financial reporting?
So where where, like, it wouldn't show up in there. This is the revenue or the current portion that's coming through. So where you would see breakdown of your taxes and our taxes and grants in lieu beyond note five. So note five, you got your current and your amounts in arrears. So that's kind of showing the amounts that you have currently, one million, your amounts that are arrears, which would include your oil and gas amounts. Now, you have also written off some amounts in the past that you would be still trying to collect by trying to look at your valuations. This is how you management is accounted for now.
Thank you. Any further comments or questions? Now, we've received the draft. We had an opportunity to have a conversation enclosed. And we recognize that we would like to make a change to these, this draft. And it would just be to reflect the misappropriation of funds that have occurred to the MD of Tabor. If council so desires that, then our statements have a line in a schedule that would reflect that. So if we were to do that, then the if we wouldn't just be accepting the draft, we would make a, we would have a different motion. And before I call for the motion, it, does anyone else have any questions to Mr. Taylor or to administration? Or does administration have any comments they want to share?
Just want to thank Derek and his team for going through the process and and helping us complete this audit this year or for for twenty twenty-three. Very grateful for them for making the time to do so and for his time today to come in and make the presentation.
Thank you. Okay, so at this time, is someone prepared to make the motion or have another question?
I can give you the motion, municipal district of Tabor. Consolidated financial statements for the year ended December thirty-first, twenty twenty-three be approved, subject to reclassification of expenses on schedule two and schedule five. And I would assume that those numbers, we don't have them, so we can't enter them at this time, but they will be in the will we approve, be approving another draft or is this draft going to become our statement with them changes?
The new statements would then be produced by KPMG and then they would have those numbers included in there for signature by council.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments?
So just just to clarify what you guys just talked about, it's a number that we don't know about. Yeah, we don't know what the actual number is, right? But it'll, so with this motion, it's not going to be coming back with those additions. It's just going to be put in there. Is that the way I understand what's happening?
That's correct at this time, yeah.
It just becomes a line item on schedule two and let's schedule five. Misappropriate, it's going to be called.
Yes, that's what we will have put in there.
Currently, the expense is showing in general and administrative. It'll just be moved down.
So then it will just have a its own line item versus its current. So the number is currently there under expenses, but now it will have its own line item in that.
That's correct. It's currently aggregated in in your general and administrative. It's just going to be broken out and presented in a separate line item as discussed. The amount is actually included in there. It's just aggregated. I just don't have the precise. We we have the precise number, just not here.
Okay. Is that satisfactory based on the motion to council?
It is, but on the other hand, it's a number. We don't even know what the number is. And that's what it it doesn't seem right to be approved in something when you don't have the right number.
This is one of those areas where it's a an estimate at this at this part where we would get as close as we can, knowing, knowing what we do know. And then that's the number we would include in there.
So Mike, do you know what that estimate is at this moment?
The estimate this time is about about forty-two thousand.
And would that likely be the number that we would be using? I agree with Councilor Harris to approve a motion that we're adding a number makes us feel like, oh. So
Sorry, it is forty-two thousand. So what you'd be moving down is you'll be moving forty-two thousand from your general administrative expenses down to another separate line item.
Okay, I I guess if the number we're going to stick in there is a known number, I'm more comfortable. It's just approve an emotion with imaginary number. It's kind of problematic for me.
Yeah.
It's not an imaginary number. It's forty-two thousand is the estimate at this.
Okay. Yeah, and I think
That's 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 fine. Then I just, like I said, I I just a number that we don't have a like I said, but an imaginary number is problematic.
Yeah, so we have an actual number that will just be lined as misappropriation and and this is a reflection of some of the circumstances that our municipality has faced over the last two years to reflect the misappropriation. So with that, are people comfortable with that number, with that res- uh, motion that's in front of us? Okay, any further questions or comments? And Mike, will council will receive the the statements and then they will be made public on our website as are all our past statements as well.
That's correct. Once, once we receive them from Derek and his team, then we would we'd call in, I I believe it'd be the mayor and and I believe the CAO would then sign those those statements. And they will be posted on our website for a lot of view.
Okay, thank you. Okay, with that, I will ask those in favor. We have accepted the twenty twenty-three consolidated financial statements with the changes. So thank you. Thank you to KPMG and to Mr. Taylor and his team. We appreciate their efforts to meet our obligations and we look forward to our future years with KPMG doing our audit. Okay, let's just take two minutes and then we'll get back at it. Did you have anything else, sorry? Okay. Thank you. We'll resume the meeting. So number six, declarations of conflict. Seeing none, we'll go to the consent agenda, starting with the CEO report and I'll turn it over to Mike.
Uh, thank you. This, I have here just the reports from various departments of where they're at and providing an update on their activities. I'm not sure how, I don't recall how our list goes. It's just kind of question-based or if he kind of gives a a reading through it, but I'll leave that to you to.
So our general practices is if there's anything that needs to be highlighted, otherwise we'll turn it to council to ask questions or bring forward any comments from the report. And we do that and then we'll go to the check run after. So council, do you have any questions or comments at this time on the report? Counselor Tricado?
I don't know if it's directly into the report, but I'm going to ask it here anyway. And that is with a kind of a number of calls with
I don't know if it's directly into the report, but I'm going to ask it here anyway. And that is with uh kind of a number of calls with dust mitigation and residents that are upset with the dust that's created by commercial agriculture operations and just wondering what what uh solutions can be offered?
Let Corey handle that one.
I'll be so candid as maybe to move to town. But I do want to see if there is anything we can do.
Um, so on larger halls that we hear about, we try to enter into a road use agreement with the individuals. Um, and part of that agreement is dust mitigation. So whether it's a water truck or they hire to apply calcium, uh, we have had individuals that know we're doing the spring and fall calcium application, so they apply for it, knowing that they're doing a hall somewhere um or around feedlots, et cetera. Um, so we are getting some traction on that sort of stuff, but aside from that, it um it is where it is.
So with that, is it? Is it okay if a rate payer or resident uh looks after their own dust mitigation with a water truck? Or is that have to be coordinated through Public Works?
Um, that's okay. They just need to let us know that they're doing it. Um, we would prefer some sort of more permanent solution like not permanent, but long term solution like calcium rather than water, but um we have had individuals that use water. They just need to be careful. They're not applying too much, so.
Thank you.
And we have seen commercial operators out of respect for their neighbors and for the safety of their own drivers utilizing water. So I think that could be communicated. And perhaps we need to do that on our website because right now it is really dusty. And as I made that candid remark, we want everyone to be safe on the roads. So maybe that's something we should look at in a future um social media or website release that we, there is that opportunity for people to mitigate the dust themselves. And and we don't know many operators take that seriously. Counselor.
Yeah, up uh up our way, I guess with the two feedlots up there, they are watering the roads and some of the water though about a mile from the highway. So when the trucks come to the road, it doesn't bring the dust too. So it is working up our way with the CFOs, but the new lots and enchant are getting a little shabby, grass and kosher weed. Need to be tendered to sometime. Okay, that's what I have. Thank you.
Bring it up today.
Anyone else have anything they want to bring forward? I appreciate the, you know, we're seeing the report uh adapt and adjust as as we have changes in staff. And I think it's helping us understand where we're at with staffing and what's happening. We have been receiving updates on some of the water concerns with our water commissions. I appreciate the public awareness and the work that the water commissions are doing because even though they're arms length, it still has a direct impact on our residents and on our neighbors. So appreciate the work that's being done there. Any other questions or comments? Just give council a minute. And it seems, uh, again, this might be through Mike to Corey, the projects seem on task for completion based on weather and um the our road projects. So I, when I look at what your chart is, are you feeling like we're going to meet our obligations for what we've set out or are we?
For the shoulder pull projects and that sort of stuff, uh, we are not going to meet our target this year.
Okay.
Yeah, it was a late start and staffing issues were prevalent this spring, so.
Okay. So perhaps we'll we as we evaluate what happened this year, then we might have to adjust what our targets are. You know, we that did come up as a council concern that we felt the targets were high. But um we might need to look at that and how we're managing future hours and staffing, just so that we can make sure we're in alignment, but also creating a level of service. And on that, did we, we changed through council having um to permanent staff versus seasonal? Was that helpful in the recruitment? Has that solidified that recruitment?
Yeah, I have had a lot of applicants. We so we made the two changes at the same time. So I'm not sure if it's the full time seasonal, full time change that made an impact, I believe it did, but we also changed to the new H R services. So uh, have been getting a lot of applicants. Uh, I only have one remaining position to fill. Um yeah, get lots of applicants, just um not a ton of quality applicants, so.
Right, those are very specific qualifications, so that that's understandable, but I'm glad to see that we're moving towards that. All right, anything else that people wanted to bring forward? Okay, we'll continue with the um consent agenda, but if someone has something afterwards, we'll we'll address it. So generally, uh, we just bring forward the the batch runs and the direct debit. And if people have specific questions, we just put them up on the screen one at a time and go from there. Okay, we can just keep going through them. And then if someone has reason for pause, then we'll.
I see a greater training on there. So have all the graders completed the training now or?
Uh, all the three that were scheduled for this year have completed it, yes.
Did they find it helpful and valuable to them?
Yes, the operators are finding it helpful. Um, they're liking the new technique. Um, I'm liking the fuel savings, so that's good.
Okay.
Um, but we are finding that we're going through blades a lot faster, so.
Okay, and is that just maybe, I don't know that that's a bad thing if the roads are being done better. And I have had less complaints this summer than I have in the past. So I I was and I drove roads last couple days and for the most part, even my worst roads are better than they have been, so.
Right. Um, yeah, this year was a different year. We had the moisture in the spring, which really helped things. Um and the training, so it's I I can't say which way was the the better way, but yeah.
So with the training, is that something you're going to rotate through every year? We have three training every year. Is that is that the plan?
Yeah, I've scheduled another three for next year. Um, and we will continue to train until all of our staff, all the greater staff are trained. Um, following that, I'm going to have them trained in winter maintenance as well because this program also does a winter winter program. Um, and then once the winter is done, I'll retrain again for the summer. So just to keep their their skills up, so.
That's good to hear. Thank you.
Any further questions on the greater training? And we have the council expenses. As you can see, June was a very busy month and people want a detail of those expenses. They're available online. And then next we go to the capital projects report and I'll turn that to Mike, if he has anything you'd like to comment.
I just have a question. And it's under fire protection, twenty twenty three Barnwell engine. I just need to understand that that's actually the one that's for Tabor, isn't it? I mean, Barnwell, the Barnwell didn't get new engine. They got the old one from Tabor. So I'm just curious why it's listed as Barnwell engine.
I'd have to look into that one as to if it was just a an entry put into the spreadsheet as a name at one point and then exchange that, but I'd have to follow up on that one.
Otherwise, I don't see any big red flags, but uh, no, we still have some budget remaining, so that's good. So the operating financial statements. And then the financial summary and the bank statement. Okay, um, just before we go on to council reports, if anyone has additional questions on any of those financials or C A O reports as they come up, just please flag it or send an email. Uh, council reports. Mine is there with the the attachments. It's been busy. And we have quite a few public events coming up as well, some heavy meetings for some of our projects. So everyone is involved with that. So I'll answer any questions, but that's all I have. And then Deputy Reub de Groot has his attached. I'll just kind of run through them and then if people have questions or they're here, the Old Man River report is from Deputy Reub de Groot's. Counselor Chikado is next. Go ahead.
So um, my report is not attached, but I guess I'd like to give him a verbal one. So other than my regularly scheduled meetings, I attended a number of meetings. One was the twenty hard to believe Lamb Weston's been here for twenty five years, but we were able to attend their French fried Friday, um, July twelfth. That's amazing. How many people came out for free fries? Unbelievable. Uh, also went to the Lethbridge County sixtieth anniversary barbecue um in Shaughnessy. That was very well attended and a good event. And Tabor's table on July nineteenth was also a very successful event again. And if there's any questions of any of my other um committees, please feel free to ask.
Okay, next on this agenda is Counselor Clausen.
I don't think have anything further to add. The report's there. Take any questions or any?
Counselor Reynolds?
Yeah, I guess same with me and my report. So there the committees that I went to, if anybody's got any questions, I'll ask them.
And Counselor Harris, you provided us reports.
Didn't get it in on time, so I sent it to everybody last night and an explanation on um what's been going on as far as the Stormwater Drainage Committee. We've met with four different municipalities and gotten endorsements from them. S M R I D is their next meeting is sometime this month and we expect that they'll uh provide an endorsement of the project also and going to City Medicine Hat Cypress County, the third and fourth of September with uh Cypress uh down in forty mile after that one. Also in the report that I sent is an email from Jack. An update on where things are as far as phase two and three. We're hoping to get phase three out to the tender this summer. And the difficulties with phase two have been explained there and it's easiest to for you to read it than me to try and explain the snags that we've run into in the last couple weeks. Always still working to get a phase two um right away uh purchased through S M R I D and uh the highway twinning portion of it is going to be done this fall, but there's still some stags with that as far as the hydraulics on making the canal still work uh when it's been, I believe the culverts are going to be down a couple of feet or a couple of meters, I should say. So it's going to be the height, making the hydraulics work for S M is going to be difficult if we can't some of the work between the Red Trail and Highway Three done this fall also.
Thank you. And I think the amount of work that's been done and what's coming forward, it it is incredible. And I think on that note, we should also recognize that Premier Smith was here on July twenty fourth. And that was one of the highlights that we were able to show her the completed portion. And it was very important to the M D of Tabor that she recognized the value of the spillway and in and the drainage project to ensure the stability of irrigation and providing food for not only our area, but for our nation and worldwide. Uh, she was on site. She was um couldn't believe the size of it. And she has asked to see pictures of what the flood looked like and then a further overview of the project. So we're going to make sure we get that to her. And uh, when she was here also, we were able to highlight concerns with housing. Uh, the appreciation of the Highway Three twinning, but also the challenges of water and sewer along that line. And we are glad to have a good relationship with Premier Smith and the Alberta government on our projects with STIP and our bridge funding and other aspects that are necessary for our municipality to be successful. So we appreciate Premier Smith taking the time to attend the M D of Tabor and with our neighbors, the Town of Tabor, because most of our projects are they're they may not be the same, but they're in harmony to make our municipality a success. Any other questions for Counselor Harris on especially on the amount of work and dedication he's given to the spillway project for the drainage project? It's been a great deal of time and effort working with all of our neighbors as well. Okay. We have correspondence, an email with pictures from four H from Ron Friesen on behalf of the Friesen family. So very nice picture for Ron, Rick and Raymond Friesen and families and appreciation for all the work that they've done with four H and we were part of that sponsorship. Okay, at this time, is there any request for uh exemption? Administration will get details on the um what was the? Oh, yeah, the fire truck one. And we'll just get that by email just at a later date. It's not an urgent. So if there's no request for exemption from the consent agenda, I'll get a motion to accept it as presented.
I can move to accept the consent agenda as presented?
Thank you. Any questions? Those in favor, that's carried. Okay, number eight, upcoming meetings and events. So there's been a number of invitations that went out of late. And so if you can just make sure you reply to. Lace on those and some of these have been updated. I've seen different people have, uh. Let Lace know. And then. So that's the attachment A. And then attachment B. We have a request for meetings and participants at the Fall Convention for R M A. So I, I think. We could discuss this now. What's the deadline for this one lace? Do we have? Okay, so we won't have a meeting. So if we could just, we'll include the participants of anyone who's going to R M A, but at this time. What are, what would we like to bring forward as our main three topics? To municipal affairs?
I know that, well, I, I believe that the Lethbridge County is bringing forward a motion or resolution. On. Sub, subclass of. On the farmland. I'm trying to think.
Yeah.
What it's called. Anyways, that's a topic that could be discussed as. The reason that we would have to support something like that, I think is one topic we could.
Okay, that sounds good.
I don't know if it's the right minister, but unpaid oil and gas as well, because it seems to not go away.
I think it's, that's got to be ongoing and it's important because it impacts us municipally. So municipal affairs has to work in tandem with others. And I think our STIP projects have to be brought forward. Just to ensure that it's relevant to him. Make sure he's aware of what our demands are. And the demands on the municipality, not our demands to him, but in order to fund that. Does anyone else have any areas of concern they'd like to bring forward? If you do, we could send them to council, to admin through councils so that we can not miss anything. We can review what we talked to him about last time and make sure that, uh, we have a bit of a follow-up as well. Is that enough for you at this time lace? Okay, and then. We have, we received an invitation from Lace, but just so that you know, the, uh, South Region A S B is October twenty-eighth and ninth. And if we had any resolutions that we were, we, we have been talking about that as at A S B, we discussed on weeds. And how we were going to manage that.
Do we know what the deadline is for resolutions for the conference?
I think that was brought up at our last. Yeah. I think we have that in our A S B and I think, uh, Jordan was our, was working on it. So I think we're okay there. And we were going to double check whether there already was a resolution on changing chemical. That was what it was related to on. You know, if they broad stroked out chemical without having a replacement chemical and the impact. Hey, anything else that we're missing on the upcoming meetings and events? So at this time, I would just accept a motion to receive this for information.
I can receive the upcoming meetings and events schedule for information.
Okay. And those in favor, it's carried. M D T Water Shortage Response Plan. We asked administration to provide an update on this regularly at council. So you know we're at stage one. So we would just be receiving this for information.
I can give you a motion to receive the, uh, Municipal District of Tabor Water Shortage Response Plan update as information.
Okay, those in favor. It's carried. Okay. So we have quite a number of things on the agenda. Do we want to break now for a short lunch and resume? What's your preference? I, I have before tried to get us through and think we're going to be done in an hour. But I, I worry that I'll be misjudging on that. So I wondered, do you want to take a half an hour break? And resume at twelve thirty? Would that meet enough time for admin to have a break? And just because I know we have some folks around the chief council who need to get to their other obligations.
That's fine for administration side.
Okay, is lunch here now? Okay, so then we would recess for thirty minutes and resume at twelve thirty. All right, we'll resume the council meeting. We have now, we're going to request for decision, the T D Cala fundraising request. So we had a presentation this morning and I'll turn it over to Mike to just review the. R F T that's in front of us.
So having the, uh, delegation here this morning, um, they are requesting. Uh, two hundred fifty thousand dollars in the form of a, a grant or a loan. Um. There's been some opportunity to have this item in front of council, uh, for the last few, uh, sessions of council. And I believe here in, in these bullet points is what, uh, Bryce was able to update as far as this request where. They've increased their request from a hundred fifty to two hundred fifty based on, uh, the various needs of the building acquisition and the renovations and the grant matching. So I would answer any questions. You had the, I'm here this morning to give their, uh, do their business case and, and present that. Yes.
Okay, so what we heard today as, um, Mike just reviewed. Is, and we had them here before. We asked for additional information and a business case. They had at that time asked for. A hundred and fifty thousand dollar grant. And now there were, are asking for two hundred and fifty. The R F G that's in front of us, which was one option that they had discussed and we asked about it today was, um. A non-interest loan. So I'd just take any discussion from council or any thoughts on which direction you'd like to go?
Mike, if we gave them a loan or a grant. Where does the money come from? A reserve of some kind? If you could just tell us where, I mean, the loan, I, I understand. If we go the loan way, we have to do a loan bylaw. And advertise and whatnot, but if, if we were to do a grant, where's the money coming from?
Uh, thank you. Uh, I'd be proposing that come from the General Municipal Operating Reserve. And I'll just bring this up on so you can see. This is, this is from the, um, the schedule that was brought from the, at the. Final budget discussions and the reserve balances. I'll get that available for you to see. Um, this top portion has the operating reserves and their projected balances in twenty twenty-four. And so our recommendation would coming from, um, the general municipal. Reserve, um, in a loan that would reduce by the amount of the loan and they would pay that back each year and then repayments then go back into that reserve. Uh, if it is a grant, then that is depleted by that amount, um, going forward.
To me, I'm not comfortable with a grant. I would be comfortable with a loan. And my mind goes to the one hundred and fifty original ask. That's just where I.
It is a hundred thousand. I bet we couldn't split that with the town of Tabor. Them go fifty, let's go fifty.
And the town of Tabor, if I'm correct, is a loan as well.
As far as I understand, they have, they have, uh, approved a motion to do a loan as well.
And it's contingent on M D of Tabor's support, if I recall the.
Their, their motion was also, was continued on the M D of Tabor and the C F E P grant.
Okay.
Being approved. They're all with the grant. It also has the other, the M D portion as well. So it's a, have a three-part.
Right.
Moving piece puzzle.
I think it is a very, it is a very important organization. Over and above, um, immigrants and new people to our community. I worry always in any organization is the ability to manage their own funds, but I think, you know. I know I placed their chair on the spot today. But his answer really secured my thought on how we should proceed. And also I think it identifies whether an organization can stand on its own. I do think perhaps a second motion that I might make is, uh, consider a. Grant in the twenty twenty-five budget year. To them, but I think of the, the initial ask. Of that. And I also, I guess the one information we don't have is would they want a two hundred and fifty thousand dollar no interest loan? And what are the terms? Do you know what they, what they're willing to do? Is it a ten-year payback? Is it a twenty-year payback? And on the hundred and fifty is probably the only information you might have.
Correct. Based on, they were willing, they were open to the ten-year hundred and fifty thousand dollar interest-free loan that had been spoken about previously. If that were to be a loan that was increased to two hundred and fifty thousand over ten years, I don't know if that's still. In the same, leaves them in the same position or, um. That might be if they get a grant, then it's for two hundred and fifty, but if they want the loan, then it stays at one hundred and fifty that we had to find that out.
I know we discussed, uh, maybe seeing some more tangible numbers in a financial statement or something like that at the last meeting. So I'm not sure if that was received or. No.
The, when I sat on T D Cala, the one challenging part about seeing a financial statement is they're kind of in seven different parts because they have seven. Streams of funding. So to see it all in one place. So I was glad that, um, their chair could address. The restricted reserve question that Merrill asked, so we could understand the unrestricted. So I, I think for me at this time, I, I know solidly where I land. I, I look to the current. Member of T D Cala to give us a thought.
Well, we all know the work that they do. Um, their fiscal responsibility is the reason that they have. Um, the reserves to be able to purchase the building. It's operational efficiencies that have gotten them there. And that's why they'll be, I, I know for certain they'll be able to pay the loan back. I don't think this council, but, but look, reading the room, I don't think this council is in favor of doing a, a grant at this time. But the work that they do and the guidance that the board and the chair provide. And the executive directors that I've worked with in these two years that I've been on this, they're, they're top-notch people. And it's a very well-run organization that. Doesn't allow anyone that comes knocking on the door to go away without a solution, regardless of whether they have funding to cover that solution or not. They're always willing to help. And I think Shazad pointed that out today when they. End up going to Lethbridge, Alberta Works in Lethbridge. They don't have translators. Let's just send them back. Uh, the office here is supposed to be open, but it's not. So saying it's somebody else's job. Is fine, but then you've left someone behind and, and that's something that they just can't do. And that is very admirable.
And Merrill sits on T caps and we, we have seen the reports that T D Cala, F C S S, Safe Haven Food Bank. They're making sure that they're working in their own lanes for the benefit of everyone. No one is out, um. Trying to take over anyone's resources. They're trying to figure out what's best for the people who live in our area. And help them and they have a good referral working relationship and probably Merrill can speak more to that even from his F C S S experience.
Well, I, I think, um. No one left behind, I believe, is what he said this morning. And that's the way F C S S works also that. They do their best to help whoever tries to access the services, whether it's something that they can directly help them with or not. And I know more than anything, the need is, is there for this, um. This organization to fill some of the gaps that there are in, in. The social network that we try to maintain in our community. I'm certainly in favor of doing an interest-free loan for a hundred and fifty thousand, but I'm also going to throw out there that we give them a hundred thousand dollar grant.
Yeah, that's what I want is a motion.
Think it's, uh. Also important to point out that, um, some other organizations have a check off from the M D of Tabor. Um, T, uh, T D Cala does not. So they're, they've been functioning on their own. I think we gave them a number of years ago. We gave them a temporary, some temporary help. But other than that, they're not here every year knocking on our door. That's also important to highlight. I'll give the motion, the Municipal District of Tabor approve the financial request from the Tabor and District Community Adult Learning Association. In the amount of one hundred and fifty thousand dollars. In the form of a ten-year interest-free loan to be allocated from the General Municipal Operating Fund Reserve. And that the Municipal District of Tabor approve a one hundred thousand dollar grant to T D Cala. And loan financing be dependent on the following requirements. A loan is contingent on a loan bylaw. Being passed by council, a loan is contingent on securing two hundred and fifty thousand dollar funding from Community Facility Enhancement Program. All in one, unless you want it separated out.
So the. For giving the loan and the grant that all come out of the, uh, reserves. And then when they pay back to go back in the reserves again.
That's correct. The, the grant amount would not, but the, the loan amount would return and go back to that same reserve. Yeah.
So with the other extra hundred thou- hundred thousand, then we have uh room for that in our budget? Or we just massage it in somewhere?
Uh this would be a a budget amendment to a degree would be it'd be an adjustment to as a additional expense then funded fun a funded expense.
We can do the grant as a part of the next year's budget, but then it's up for debate again at budget deliberation, so.
Okay, uh if you have any further questions or comments on this, um I am willing to go around the room if people want that, or if you're prepared for the vote at this time, that's good too. This organization has made a incredible impact and change on our municipality. And I think to have their own location that is provides consistency and ensures that um a goal forward, the M D of Tabor has in the past and currently recognizes the value. We have have had a board member since they wrote their bylaws and have had influence on how we um assist them. All right. Any other comments or questions? Do we have a yes, uh Mike?
If I may, the motion as stated, um had the loan contingent on um the loan bylaw and the funding from C F E P. Would the just clarification, the grant would also be continued on receiving the grant funding from C F E P grant, or if it would be independent um whether that grant goes through or not to provide that hundred thousand dollars to T D Cala. The motion, the motion would say it goes to them anyway, but.
I go ahead.
I was just gonna say, I think it it's all contingent on excuse me, the town given, excuse me, the town giving them money and receiving the grant, and that's, I guess the idea was if as long as all the other partners, if you want to call it that, do their part, we would do our part.
Okay.
I wonder with that motion, if we shouldn't have in there for the purpose of purchasing and renovating the building at such address, just so that it doesn't become just an open. You can take your time, Lisa.
And I think as um the Reeve suggested, putting in there that it the purpose of the loan is for, oh, there it is. Okay, sorry.
Does that capture? No? Okay.
I will read the motion that the M D of Tabor approve the financial request from the Tabor District Community Adult Learning Association in the amount of a hundred and fifty thousand in the form of a ten-year interest-free loan for purchasing and renovating its new location to be located to be allocated from the General Municipal Operating Reserve Fund. And loan financing be dependent on the following requirements. The loan is contingent on a loan bylaw being passed by council. The loan is contingent on securing two hundred and fifty thousand funding from the Community Facility Enhancement Program. And furthermore, that the M D of Tabor provide T D Cala with a hundred thousand dollar grant for the purpose of purchasing and renovating its new location, and that the funds be allocated from the General Municipal Operating Reserve Fund. And that the grant be dependent on the aforementioned requirements. Any questions? Those in favor? Those opposed? That motion is carried. Sorry, M L A Hunter sent um a this request for our just let you get to that. On our twenty twenty-five priority projects, and uh he has a deadline of August sixteenth, and the idea is that those are areas that he would champion for us. Administration has provided three options. And if you have something different that you would like brought forward or areas that you would like discussed, we have, we can do that at this time. Counselor Clausen?
Just for the uh regional water, maybe water security in general.
I think I think that would be a natural add. Counselor Turcato?
And to add more to that, water security, I think um we're also gonna need more funding for the Horsefile Lake spillway for its completion, and that might be something we can also ask for there. I don't know if it falls under step or not, but resource roads.
Yes, that understood, yeah.
And funding for an airport extent expand runway extension.
Understood as well.
So can we add those just to expand on those? That way we still stay in under the three, but uh.
Do you do you want multiples per category? I was under the understanding it was one per category, but.
He just the the text that I got was tell me what your number one priority is, and then if you have any other priorities. So I'm, you know.
For the airport extension, should we touch base then with the town of Tabor because they're also interested in accomplishing that? So maybe that could be a joint effort on that on on that line item.
I'm I'm in support of doing that, but I don't want us to go down a rabbit hole of like the idea is he'll champion for us, but I think we could be better prepared on the airport. We could still add that. But I think if we're gonna ask the town, I have, we have that committee with the town of Tabor. I have one thing already, so we could add the second, which the airport committee was already working on some things, I I believe, from a a bit ago, so we can add it, but I don't know that we want to move it anywhere near the the front. And I guess on the, and that's why with the provincial projects, highway three twenty. I I'm in favor of that, but as well, it's already happening. And the resource roads, I think, has to fit into their, like, I almost would rather. Yeah, I I just don't wa- I don't want to lose sight of that, but it it becomes that um yeah, the pro- the highway three, we we want to help the other people get it done, but it's already happening. That's a, but that will be a different and I have not had the same request from that M L A. And we would love to hear a a request from M L A Scout to to prioritize for us, so I I'll yeah, so it'd be nice if we can track him down as well. So we do appreciate M L A Hunter, you know, reaching out to us for this. So would you like to um put step at the top and ask the province to increase it, or is that gonna be an allocated funding? We already kind of know what that is. But the regional water and wastewater system as well as water security, do we move that to the front? Or and then do we look at the spillway, the drainage projects? Where do we fit them? And I'm just looking for advice. Go ahead, Shantel.
I think Premier Smith mentioned, you know, businesses, when they're looking to set up, they're looking for fiber, potable water and housing. So I think, I mean, water is pretty top-tier priority.
Right, and since it's on her radar, it may help us with with that as well. And we So how do people feel about reordering? And you know, these are recommendations from staff. They're looking to council to help with the priority, so just your feedback is very important. So how are people feeling about moving the, you know, I think if I was gonna keep highway three twinning, I would probably change it almost to a um the egg corridor, right? The development of the egg food corridor. Yeah, you can add it, yeah. Okay, when you see this, does this? Counselor Harris, did you want to reorder?
I think so.
Just.
I think it's important also to include in that step funding the resource road program.
Right. And that our residents have to fund and we don't have those resources. So bridge funding and then could you add resource road and to that number two as well, resource roads?
It wouldn't hurt to send the list to M L A Scout just to know that that he, these are our priorities.
Well, maybe we should um add though, let's let's send them to Scout, but then also let's include is it five twenty, five twenty-six? And five twenty-one? And then is there anything else that we're missing there? And we could okay.
We should probably include the um high highway eight seventy-seven upgrades, because that is in
Can't that?
M L A, but you don't want to name them.
Yeah.
With that same, in that same line with the step projects.
Right, that's what I think. They they've already acknowledged that. So we can take out, actually go provincial projects and take out highway three twinning. Let's list the three names of the highways. And we can leave egg food corridor because we know what's happening there. Is that egg food quarter sums it up? Yeah, we'll see see Mr. Scout when we send the email. Because I think it came to me by text and then I forwarded to so I still think by email is a better mechanism to do that. Yep, that's, yeah, for sure, because that's where that funding. Yeah, the these look very similar to me as what the municipal affairs do. So but I agree with Merrill on the Okay, so those three, so we would go by resolution to put those forward.
I can keep the motion at municipal. I can keep the motion at Municipal District of Tabor. Respond to the MLA's request for twenty twenty five project, priority projects as stated below. Alberta Municipal Water, Wastewater, Regional Potable Water and Wastewater Systems, Water Security and Additional Funding for Phase Two and Three of the Horsefly Regional. Water Spillway Project, Stip Projects, Bridge Funding, Resource Roads and Airport Runway Extension, Provincial Projects, Highway Five Twenty Six, Five Twenty One and Eight Seventy Seven. And the egg or food corridor and include MLA scout and the correspondence.
All right, any questions or comments? Those in favor? Thank you. All right, operation and this, and maintenance facility repair. Through Mike to, to Cory.
I'll let Cory take over this one. Yes, so before you was asked to. Add a capital budget item to this year's capital budget. Previously in twenty twenty three, we had a capital budget item to do the roof repair on the O N M building. Due to the water coming through the seam between the office and the shop. We thought we had it fixed. Then spring came and the rains came and we found out it wasn't fixed. It did substantially reduce the amount of water that come in. So it appears that there was two sources of infiltration. Since then, I had the engineers involved with the design and the build. They came, took a look at it. The staining that they seen around the windows on the inside led them to believe that that's where it's coming in. Also, there's foam in the precast walls. So what they believe is happening is it's coming in through the flashing of the windows, getting into that foam and then seeping down the wall. Finding the pocket where the roof trusses of the offices go into that precast wall and coming out. Because that's where we're seeing all the water come out is those holes. Initially, when I seen it, I really didn't think that there was any way to get water in those holes, but. Now that the engineers kind of explained it to me, it makes sense. My question to him was now that the water is in that wall, do we have any chance of that? Popping the concrete off the front of the building or, and he was reaching out to Lafarge. Who designed and built the walls apparently. I haven't heard back from them yet, but this is the repair that he suggested was to pull the windows out. Reseal them, put the windows back in. What I'm proposing and after talking to the shop staff. They don't want the windows in there because the window, the sun beats down into the shop there and it gets. Pretty bright in there and it adds a lot of heat. And if we're gonna pull the windows out anyway, we might as well just leave them out and board them over and put tin over them and. And I think that would be a better repair than having another leak form in a few years, so.
I know there's no warranty left, but this seems to be. Wouldn't pay that much for a building. This, this is, this is a shame, so it is.
I agree. I agree. I've reached out to the architect. And immediately it just. They point me in a different direction, so.
So explain, if you take the windows out, you're gonna do what?
Uh, so we'll take the windows out, we'll board them up. Uh, we'll insulate them, board them up, and then we'll cut flashing in around the windows, trim. Silicone those in. Use the same black steel corrugation that's on the roof in the front of the facade over the windows, so it looks like it's supposed to be there. And. Hope for the best, I guess.
These are the windows that are more or less they're above the office.
That's.
So they're like, what, twenty feet? Above the ground, close to it? Maybe even more.
Well, more than that, yeah.
Yeah.
Maybe close to thirty feet above.
Yeah. They face, they face straight west, correct?
Straight west, yeah, yeah.
So. Then there would still be natural light through the main windows?
Uh, into the office.
Yeah.
Yeah, not to the shop though.
Right.
The shop gets all their light from the overhead doors and. Shop lighting.
Impact them.
No.
Okay.
Yeah, the, the, the position of those windows makes it difficult now to remove. Because they need some. Specialized equipment to get, to reach the windows to pull them out, so. It only makes sense to not have them there just for future maintenance side. Windows are one of those things you always have to do maintenance on, and when they're way up there, no one can get to them.
I take it they haven't been cleaned since they were installed then?
The rain gets them every once in a while. It seems like a design. Law, if you want to call it that, and, I mean, I guess we need to get it fixed, but it's received like somebody else should be fixing this, not at our, at our expense.
I agree, and I've shown. One tour of the shop for other municipalities that are looking to build. I have another one that wants to come and do a tour. And that is one of my. Things I'm telling everyone, don't do this. I, I hate that we have to keep dealing with it and I. Yeah, it's just gonna be a maintenance item ongoing for. The lifespan.
It has been since we built the building.
Yeah.
It's been, the leak has been there almost since we built the building. That's why I say it's. Somebody else's design flaw, if you want to call it that, that we're gonna pay for yet again.
Well, and it makes me really anxious when you say the water's in the foam and that pops, like, I just can't even imagine what happened to that.
And I, I asked the engineer about that, and he asked me to watch for cracks. There is some cracks already forming. In that inch and a half concrete that's. It's not structural, it's just like a facade on front, so just like a siding almost. He doesn't figure it'll cause any further issue as long as we can get that sealed. Because the water's already drained out to with the heated part of the bill, part of the wall, so.
Yeah, this hundred year building. Okay.
I've reached out to three contractors to get quotes to do this work. I've only received one back. Every time I talk to people about doing. Fixing a building, something like this, I don't know if they are eager, they're not eager to, let's just put it that way, so.
Yeah, I mean, the risk of not doing it just means we're extending the problem and potentially could make it worse.
It's, it's unfortunate, but I'll move that the Municipal District of Tabor approved the addition of thirty seven thousand dollars. To the twenty twenty four capital budget to be used for the operation and maintenance building window repair and that it be funded by the building's reserve.
Thank you. Any comments or questions? Those in favor? That motion is carried. Okay, Grassy Lake subdivision lift station project award.
Uh, so this one is. The recommended award for the lift station tender that just closed. A few days ago. Five bids were submitted. And they are part of the attached with Nitro being the lowest bidder. Engineer's recommendation is to go with Nitro. They said that they have done similar work with Nitro in the past. I personally have not done any work with Nitro, so I can't speak either way. As part of this recommendation, it would need a capital budget increase from five point seven to six point three four million dollars. We were hoping that the tender for the lift station was gonna come in. Under a million or right around a million, but. This is right where the engineer's estimate was, so. The only other last, well, there's two, two unknowns as part of this project would be the Fortis and the legal survey. Um, I did just get an email today that the Fortis quote should be ready here in a couple of days, so we'll know better. Later this week on that one, but. Civil contract has started, uh, they started moving dirt this week. Yeah.
Some of this. Cost is not, it, it's not all going to be attributed to the first phase that we're doing. It's, it can be, it'll be the other phases will have part of this cost built into them also.
That's correct, yeah.
Six point three million dollars for forty lots is pretty expensive, so I, that's why I was just curious, we're getting it spread out over. Numerous more phases of this subdivision development.
Yeah, yeah, the wetland compensation. And the lift station. Can be, can be spread out across the future phases, yes.
Yeah, because otherwise these lots will be. Yeah. So I guess that will be something you have to really keep under consideration. Yeah, because the idea of it being repaid if it doesn't, they don't sell. And you're okay with having those two estimates in there with making the? I mean, we're really just accepting the. Contract, but.
Okay. I can give you the motion, and the Municipal District of Tabor approved the tendered price of one million, three hundred and forty seven thousand dollars. Five hundred and thirty. I'll try that again, one million, three hundred and forty seven thousand, five hundred and thirty dollars and ten cents excluding GST as submitted by Nitro Construction Limited. And amend the twenty twenty four capital budget for this project from five point seven million to six point three four million dollars.
Okay, thank you. Any questions or comments? Those in favor of the red motion? Approved. Thank you. All right, we're moving on to, and thanks Cory for all your work, even though we're feeling like, oh. All right, so next is the oil and gas linear property tax foothills resolution. We saw this at committee of the whole and we made. Some changes and it was then recommended to council and you can see the red line and the changes. Counselor Tucado?
Which is something small, but in the red last, the three words of the red, there should be natural gas resources.
Right.
Sorry to be nitpicky.
Nope, it's better. So, and just so I have the correct preamble, what this is, is so that the MD of Tabor can forward a motion to our. Association at Foothills Little Bow to hopefully have success to champion it to RMA. So appreciation to staff for doing the background work and ensuring that the. Important aspects were included. This has been a prevailing problem at the MD of Tabor and also throughout the province, but it has changed on how we budget. And how we have to collect taxes because of those who do not pay their portion. In oil and gas. Okay, any other questions on that or changes?
I'll give you the motion that the Municipal District of Tabor forward for consideration the attached resolution regarding unpaid oil and gas property tax collection. To the September twenty twenty four Foothills Little Bow Municipal Association meeting as part of its resolution session.
Thank you. Questions or comments? Those in favor? That resolution is passed. Okay. Next on the agenda is committee of the whole. And it does specify the land management plan dates, but I, I don't feel we have to. Keep it as precise to that, because if we had an opportunity for something else to come up. I don't think we have to restrict it. We know that the purpose is to. Discuss and get to a decision on the land management plan, but I, I don't think that we have to. I think just leaving it open how this resolution is. The dates are all in front of you, if there was any that you wanted out right away. The discussion for those who might not have been here at committee of the whole was to put these dates in. If items weren't ready or prepared for discussion, then we would give notice to cancel, there'd be an adequate time. But the, the reasoning behind this is so that people can adjust their schedules so that we can be prepared to have these meetings. Counselor Tucado?
So I have a problem with only one of the meetings, that's the Tuesday, February eighteenth, that is the Tuesday after Family Day. And I, I know there's a few people that like to travel with their families on that week, so I don't know if that would be, and maybe that's just me.
Maybe we'll be done by then.
So the first one, September sixteenth after SDA, and we have a committee of the whole meeting the next day too. On the seventeenth, my calendar.
Yeah, that's how I, I read it too, so I wasn't sure, like, you know, but remember, we also put off. The budget, we adjourned a meeting because we didn't have any budget discussions. So we're gonna run into a time crunch and, you know, we could restrict the amount of time we have. Has SDA been finishing at ten thirty? I don't sit on that board, so.
That was just a question.
I just also worry September, everybody's harvesting, it's a busy time. Like, I wonder if we just stick with the seventeenth, I, because that was what my wonder was too, but then I was like. We have to do some work on budget and we have to do work on this project, on the land management. So would people want to strike September sixteenth? Does that make sense? I'm looking for nods. Okay, yeah. So we'll take that one out for sure. And then the other dates. You know, we are gonna, we did schedule a committee of the whole in each month, but we still have to do budget, so. You know, this is definitely because at one time we thought we were gonna do some of this work in a workshop, but now we're gonna do it all in committee of the whole. you know, this is definitely because at one time we thought we were gonna do some of this work in a workshop, but now we're gonna do it all in committee of the whole. The other one's okay to leave and then we'll see, and the direction we gave administration was that if we schedule them and we're not ready for them, then let's, we'll cancel them. Does that theory work with everyone still? Okay, all right, so we'll cross out the sixteenth. Knowing that the September seventeenth could be a bit of a marathon day, but and then depending on if we have everybody. So look for a a motion.
I can give a motion that the MD of Tabor scheduled committed whole meetings for the following dates. Uh Monday, October twenty first. Twenty twenty four, ten thirty AM, we're after the completion of SDA. Monday, November eighteenth, Monday, December sixteenth, Monday, January twentieth. And what are we doing with, we're leaving in February, when, isn't it?
I don't know, we can leave it.
Well, I'll put Tuesday, February twen- February eighteen twenty twenty five.
Oh, yeah.
And um if we need to, we can cancel.
Yeah, I think that was the intention. All right. Those in favor of the motion? That's carried. Um just one note, as we schedule these meetings, there becomes an additional cost to these projects, right? For staff, for council, for the municipality, so hopefully we can get after some of these projects and knock them off. In the, in the thoroughness that they need. Okay, we have no consent agenda items, does number eleven, does any council member have a request for information or a motion they'd like to bring forward? Seeing none, closed session, we have already dealt with the KPMG one, so we have one item to deal with. Pursuant to section one nine seven sub two of the MGA, section twenty four and twenty seven, vision two with is advice from officials regarding unpaid oil and gas tax, so if I could get a motion to go into closed, it'll be brief.
Give a motion to go into closed session.
One thirty, thank you, Murray, those in favor? It's carried. Oh, yeah, all right, a motion to come out of closed session?
Give a motion to come out of closed session.
Okay, thank you, those in favor? No motions coming out of clothes, so a final item.
Motion to adjourn.
At one thirty five.